Good evening, everyone. It's 6:01, so I'd like to -- we still have some stuff going on in the room, but I'd like to get the meeting started on time if we could. And we'll start with standing for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Tovar.
Please stand. Ready, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your honor for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. We do not have an invocation, so everyone can be seated. Before we get to the City Clerk's report, I have a couple of announcements. One is that this is the last City Council meeting with our City Clerk, Ty Pham. We want to -- I know we want to wish him well. He's moving on, taking a job with Union City. So we've really enjoyed our time with him. It's a great opportunity for him, better for him. So we want to thank you, Ty, for all of your service to Gilroy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yeah, you're welcome. And then I'd also like to announce February birthdays. I try to do this. That's myself and Councilmember Hilton. I don't think he's had a milestone one. Do you want to say what your turn?
No.
Okay, well, for me, it's 60, and that was yesterday. So this is a big deal, big, big, big deal. Because that means the next milestone is 70. I'm already focusing on that. Okay, City Clerk's report on posting the agenda and roll call.
Yes, Madam Mayor. The agenda was posted on February 1st at 5:01 PM. Councilmember Armadarez?
Here.
Councilmember Bracco?
Here.
Councilmember Klein?
Here.
Councilmember Hilton?
Here.
Councilmember Tovar?
Here.
And Mayor Blinckley.
Here. Okay, that brings us to orders of the day. We have none. Employee introductions. We have one in finance. Harjot, you want to introduce?
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers, members of the community. Harjot Songh, I'm the Finance Director with the City of Gilroy. Tonight, I have the pleasure of introducing the newest member of the finance team, Jeanette Sid. Jeanette recently joined the Finance Department as an accounting assistant. She comes to us with over 13 years of experience in the banking industry, starting off as a teller, and most recently working as a personal banker for a bank here in town. She brings with her extensive experience and skills in accounting and finance with an emphasis on customer service, which is extremely valuable and important to us. She is a lifelong resident of Gilroy and looks forward to serving the community in this new capacity. As far as her responsibilities within the Finance Department, her primary role will be providing customer service here at the information desk at the City Hall, navigating customers to the appropriate departments to obtain services. In addition, she'll also be providing customer service in the Finance Department's utility billing function. Outside of work, Jeanette is happily married to her husband, Jasmani. They have three beautiful children with ages ranging from 2 to 17, all of them keep -- both of them on their toes, and excited to share that she has another one on the way later this year.
Yay!
With the little time that she does have, she really likes to spend that with her family outside of work. Again, please join me in welcoming Jeanette Sid.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. It's a pleasure to be here. Thank you for this opportunity and looking forward and continue serving our community by living and growing my career here with the City of Gilroy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, under ceremonial items, we have none. Presentations to the council. This is item 3.1, a public comment for items not on the agenda but within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council. And I'm going to go there and see that we have 11 speakers. Okay, so the time will be two minutes each. Ty, do you want to call the first ones, and then I'll take it from there?
Yes, Madam Mayor. The first speaker is going to be Anne Marie McCully, followed by Ron Kirkish, followed by, forgive me, Noshaba Afzal.
Okay, if you are one of those 11, you know if you filled out a card, could you please come to the front row? We have reserved seats so that we don't have to wait for people to come to the mic. Okay, so it starts with Anne Marie McCully.
My comment is in reference to the January 22nd Council meeting item regarding the unhoused. It needs to be made clear that people are not refusing services that would help them leave encampments. Our unhoused citizens are being offered services they already have, like case managers, applications for multiple housing options, and doctor referrals. They're offered one night at the armory that does not have enough beds for the entire encampment or their possessions. One night does not address where they will spend the next six months to a year waiting to get in housing. It should never be assumed that these people do not want help. They are not being offered what they need to vacate the encampment, like temporary approved camping area, permanent housing, residential treatment resources, or a place to park. I'm not blaming the council, only educating you on the facts so you can properly address the encampments that cause great duress to our housed population and environment. The community agrees that there should not be encampments by the creek or schools, yet they continue to return. It is evident that this shuffle around and make them uncomfortable so they leave strategy does not work. The concept that making our most traumatized and vulnerable people suffer more so they will move along and leave Gilroy because we made their life harder for them is a regression of humanity. You can never make life harder than it already is for our unhoused. That is not a solution. The fact that no one has left Gilroy unless they get housing is confirmation that the policy doesn't work. Twenty unhoused people died in Gilroy last year. This relentless sweeping without alternative locations is only making homelessness more expensive for constituents and redirecting limited resources away from efforts that are helping to resolve homelessness. The quality of life officers can only offer the resources they have. When refused, it is not because the unhoused don't want help, it's just not the help they need. Instead of perpetuating the cycle--
Thank you. I'm sorry.
Thanks.
The two minutes are up. Thank you. Okay, Ron Kirkish?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager, City Attorney, and Community. Plan B Area 2050 is a collaboration between the Metropolitan Transport Commission, MTC, and the Association of Bay Area Governments, ABAG, and is their vision for the California future. It is also City Councilman Zach Hilton's vision as one of their foot soldiers in the cause for the future for us Gilroians. Their dystopian plan is predicated on issues pertaining to racial discrimination and equity, housing, economic economy, transportation, and environment. These are all issues of serious concern that are currently being deliberated in our society today, including our major news outlets like the San Francisco Chronicle, San Jose Mercury News, among many others. What is of major concern is the socialist remedies that the progressives, including Councilman Hilton and the Bay Area Plan Devotees, are intending to force on us residents and all Californians using tactics like racial animus, among other progressive tactics, and all add a cost of over $1.4 trillion as they work to incrementally impose the Plan's provisions on all of us Californians over the next 30 years. Over the next several meetings of the council, I'm going to lift the hood and expose to all of you and the residents of our community the provisions specified in Plan B Area 2050, and I'm sure you will be shocked to learn about this plan that Councilman Hilton insists is necessary to lead Gilroy into the 21st century. Best regards.
Thank you. All right, Noshaba Abal, and that will be followed by Anna Mendoza and Reina Denise. If you could please be in the front row.
Good evening. My name is Noshaba Afzal, and I am a resident of Gilroy for the last decade. I'm asking each of you in our city to lead and add an agenda item to your City Council meeting and pass a ceasefire resolution for Israel and Palestine immediately to unite our community against hate. I'm an educator, a wife, a mother, and a new grandmother. As an educator, I'd like to put things in perspective regarding why a ceasefire and how that relates to us locally. Many children are afraid to go to school because of their Arab, Palestinian-American, Muslim, Jewish, or other Palestinian-Christian identity. They are scared. Those children live here in Gilroy. And to put things in perspective as an educator, think about the number of children killed in Gaza in the last 122 days. It's equivalent to all 15 kindergarten through 12th grade schools in Gilroy Unified School District being bombed and completely destroyed. Every single precious child in those schools, along with a total of 10,624 students here in Gilroy being killed, and every single teacher, administrator, and staff in those schools, in addition to 1,100 of all of Gilroy Unified Staff, being killed. And horrifically, that's still not enough. You'd have to kill an additional 3,018 children, ages 0 to 4, who are not even in school, in their homes, along with their families, and you would still be short the number of people killed in Gaza, specifically children. Let that sink in. I hope you stand united against hate. I was here that day that resolution was passed. We've been doing community activities since that day to unite our community, protect everyone. This is a community that's diverse and celebrate that. I urge you to pass the ceasefire resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Anna Mendoza, Reina Denise, and Robert Zapata.
Good evening, Councilmembers. I am here for two items. One of them, I emailed you, each one of you guys, an ordinance that we have here in Gilroy for mobile parks. Today, I'm just making a public comment. If you guys can please read it, see what's happening, and then we'll be coming back with the tenants. They're here today. We'll probably come back to the next council meeting to talk about it, for them to make a public comment. We're also speaking on Karas and Latinos Unidos, where Palestina are organizing for a resolution. So we have a lot of people here today that are speaking on that matter. Like our period speaker said, let's think about those kids dying. Let's stop the hate. Let's stop all this hate here. A lot of Palestinian people are being hurt. It's just too much, and we need to protect them since they live here in our city. It's our job to pass a resolution to stop the hate. Thank you.
Thank you. Reina Denise, Robert Zapata--
Sal Artur. And Madam Mayor, could I make this switch to Spanish to English?
Sure. Absolutely.
You may begin.
Hola, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Reina Denise. Estamos aquí presentes. Primero que nada, un cordial saludo a todos. Gracias. Para de -- estamos aquí demandando una resolución para Palestina. Ese es el motivo de que aquí estamos presentes nosotros latinos. Gracias.
All right, thank you. Robert Zapata, followed by Sal Artur, and then Aisha Wadani. Do you need time, Ty, to go back?
Give me one second here.
Sure, just a second.
I am here again to continue my comments regarding COVID, and I know that everyone seems like, oh, COVID was three, two years ago. Why are you so fed up about it? Well, and the fact is that people are still being harmed by it, and not the virus itself, but the vaccine that was supposedly the solution to it. Now, this obituary I have here is from 2021, and this public comment is two and a half years too late, but unfortunately, this has to be said. And this is from someone who was in Gilroy, so it is within the jurisdiction. So I personally did not know this gentleman. Michael Anthony Granada, born February 21st, 1965, passed away November 1st, 2021. Now, in his obituary, he left a message, and it states, quote, "Many nurses and non-nursing staff begged me and my wife to get the truth out to the public about the COVID-19 vaccines because the truth of deaths from the vaccine was being hidden within the medical profession. I promised I would get the message out, so here is my message. I was afraid of getting the vaccine for fear that I might die. At the assistance of my doctor, I gave in to pressure to get vaccinated." I'm going to stop there, but to make it short, he passed away after the injection, and may he rest in peace. And just the lies that keep being pushed about the vaccine from the county itself. I mean, we still have the posters on El Roble, and you know, it's kind of interesting that the wind blew part of it off, so I'm thankful for God for that, but the point is, let's stop with this lies and let's start telling the truth about the vaccine. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Sal, followed by Aisha.
Yes, good evening, everyone. My name is Sal Artur, and I'm a resident of the City of Gilroy. I'd like to add to Ms. Afzal's comments earlier and urge this council to introduce and adopt a resolution, much like many other cities have already done in our country, in support of human rights and ceasefire in Gaza, Palestine. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Aisha, followed by Zain.
Hi, everybody. My name is Aisha. I live in Gilroy. I have four kids who go in the school district, and sorry for my English. I asking you to please-- -- to ceasefire, remove, like, okay, I need to forget whatever I write over here. I need to speak about what I feel inside. You know, I'm shaking, and first time I be here. Please, I have four kids going on district school, and I please, please, I'm asking you from my heart, like, to ceasefire, you know the word? I don't know how to say it. Ceasefire? Ceasefire? And like you do for Ukraine, you know? Please, like, do the big help you can do for Palestinian people. Those, they need big help, you know? And we, like, my kids, when they go to school, they, like, they have a lot of-- I'm asking you from my heart to help our family in Palestine. They need big help. I have my cousin, she waits seven years to have the baby. After she have the baby, she have the bomb on her house, and her baby die from her eyes, and now she don't want any more babies. And the hospital over there, they don't have any water, any electric, nothing. Four months they living like that. Who can live like that? One day, one day, we asking help, you know?
Thank you. We understand the time. Everybody has the same amount of time. I'm sorry. Thank you for coming to speak. Okay? Zain Yaya, followed by Amina Kamichi.
Hello, Mayor and Council. My name is Zain, and I've been a proud business owner here in Gilroy for 17 years now. I'm asking you to please pass a ceasefire resolution for peace in Israel and Palestine, just as you did for Ukraine in 2022. As you're aware, even the Israeli hostage families are demanding a ceasefire and release of all hostages. According to the UN, over 30,000 Palestinians have been killed in Gaza since October, including 11,500 children and 152 UN workers, which is higher than any other conflict this century. It was great to see the City Council pass the Stand United Against Hate Resolution this past November. So please put that resolution into action and pass a ceasefire resolution to keep all innocent lives in Gilroy, Israel, and Palestine safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Amina, and then Hamdi.
Good evening, everyone. Just to add to what was said about Gaza, and to encourage you also to add the proposal about ceasefire, and this is not just for Gaza or Palestine, this is also for our children who are living here. I am a teacher, I'm a mom, I'm in a school, a Gilroy Unified School teacher here in Gilroy High School, and so many of our students are going through hard time during this moment. Some of them are even scared to go to school because of flabbering, or, you know, if they were in hijab, or even their names might say something, like an art name. So everybody is scared to go to work or go to school. So there are 122 days a day. There are about 130 kids who are killed every single day, without adding about, you know, the starvation and the, I mean, it's, I mean, it's horrific, you probably, you guys have seen the photos. But we would like to be united and encourage the ceasefire, you know, proposal, and hopefully it will pass, just to also to protect our children who are living in this district and all state connect, I mean, united during this difficult time. Okay, because they're here, and they're suffering. I mean, you know, that, you know, there, you know, some of them are being pushed, or, I mean, there's so many things happening in the schools, not just in Gilroy, but in, you know, in the country as well. So like other school districts or other cities in the country have done the same thing, I encourage you to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Hamdi Abal.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Good evening, gentlemen and ladies. I am a business owner in Gilroy for the last 38 years, a member of the Gilroy Rotary Club, and an active member of the community. I urge you to adopt a resolution for ceasefire in Gaza. It is for the peace for both sides, for all sides, and for our own kids and for everybody. I thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers, Ty?
No other speaker cards, Madam Mayor.
Okay, closing public comment and moving on to reports of Councilmembers. Councilmember Bracco.
Yes, last meeting, I reported on the children's library. They're going to be building inside the library. They're planning it in the middle of summer. I wanted to bring that back. And from one of the speakers that was at your coffee on Saturday, there's going to be a play structure built inside for small children, and it is going to be wheelchair-accessible even to get on the structure itself. And then I also wanted to thank the kids from St. Mary's School that sent us all letters, and they were pretty awesome. There were some portraits. I was pretty happy to see one really put me with a lot of hair. So thank you to the children there.
Thank you. Councilmember Armadarez?
No report.
Oh, no report. Councilmember Marks?
No report.
Okay, Councilmember Hilton?
Thank you. From Silicon Valley Clean Energy, the board approved $3.45 million in funding allocations for two ongoing programs. The additional funding will enable program expansion to reach broader audiences. The first program, Future Fit Homes, has distributed over $1.3 million in customer rebates, with an additional $1.3 currently reserved for customers. The Silicon Valley Building Electrification Stronger Together Program is a collaborative group that focuses on program and policy efforts, lower costs, improve communications, and enhance opportunities for local workforce development at a regional scale. Future Fit Homes provides rebates to customers for upgrading their gas, water, and space heating to efficient electric heat pump and space heating, in addition to panel upgrades and pre-wiring. The program launched with $2.5 million, $2.9 million in incentives available, and there has been strong uptake in its first year. Approximately 434 customers have received incentives, and a total of 189 heat pump water heaters and 276 heat pump H-back systems have been installed across the service area. The program will receive $3 million for this allocation, which will nearly double the reach of the program. Since its launch in April of 2023, ZV Best has developed a stakeholder network map that includes over 100 organizations, conducted 20 stakeholder meetings with key groups, reviewed the engagement efforts of other CCAs to identify best practices. The additional $450,000 will enable SPCE to expand engagement with key stakeholders in the form of grants, collaboration with workforce, and incentives for customer feedback. The SPCE Board of Directors approved a total of $12.5 million for the Clean and Healthy Affordable Multifamily Properties Program to bring electric retrofits to renters who otherwise would not have been able to choose upgrades for their buildings. The CHAMP program aims to fully electrify 300 to 1,000 units and install 125 electric vehicle charging ports at existing deed-restricted affordable multifamily properties with five or more units, at no cost to property owners or the tenants. Thank you.
Councilmember Klein?
I have no report.
Councilmember Tovar?
Thank you, Mayor. Quickly, I want to thank the Gilroy Foundation Executive Director, Jacqueline Morrell. I had a chance to meet with her and talk about collaborating with the city. We talked about our downtown and making sure that they had some input in kind of what there's, what they're looking at doing. In addition to that, we talked about working with Gavlin College, and also to begin to start thinking about creation of scholarships for Gilroy students who want to go to Santa Clara University and get their master's in teaching, or counseling, or their doctorate. So we're going to come up with some scholarships that we'll be able to provide Gilroy students to further their education. And I also want to thank Sarah for this beautiful card from St. Mary's. So thank you so much. That's it.
Okay, my report, yeah, it's, I got a nice stack of them here, but this is to show you what this is St. Mary's School did for Catholic Schools Week. It's just kind of fun. But this year, usually they just give stuff to the mayor, but this year, they actually did things for each council member, which was kind of, kind of cute. So just sharing a little bit of that fun stuff that we get to do. Okay, the only meeting I've had since our last City Council meeting was the VTA Board of Directors. Nothing new to report on the Metropolitan Transportation Commission tax measure than what I shared on January 22nd, but I will keep bringing that information to you. On February 1st, the VTA Board unanimously adopted the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan, a document that does not commit VTA to any specific course of action, but of course, it does reaffirm their commitment to awareness and response to things that may affect climate change. Okay, that's my report, and that brings us to item five, which is council correspondence. This is information only, and what we have is in our packets for anyone to see. It's a letter in response to LAFCO. And then item six is future council-initiated items. I see a hand raised by Councilmember Tovar.
Thank you, Mayor, and I want to thank the community for coming out and speaking. You know, we do listen to you all, so I want to ask the council if we can bring back a resolution on ceasefire and have that discussion at our next council meeting.
I think that our, our community members have spoken. They've called on us to do this. Over 60 cities throughout the country have done this, and countless representatives, countless elected officials have been calling for a ceasefire. I think that no matter how small our city is, or how insignificant we think our voice is, I think the thousands of lives that have been lost will continue to be lost unless all of us stand up and say something. We all make up this whole country, and--
That's wonderful. It's good. I'm not--
I'm almost done here.
I know, because we're not supposed to be discussing, and you're giving a lot of reasons to discuss something. So let's just see if council members want to support. You may very well have it, but I'm just trying to keep everything the way it's supposed to be, even though we don't have our future agenda council policy quite yet. So is there council support to bring back a resolution that, if there is council support, Jimmy, we can work with how the wording should be, because that's what our future policy is actually going to say, that you have to first present that in the council packet before asking the council for what it, what it is. It's too general, otherwise. Okay, so is there council support to do a resolution?
We should discuss it at the very least.
I'm asking the council what they feel. Right. And I'm seeing your thumb up. I'm seeing three, Tom, is your thumb up? Okay, then we have, we have a council majority, so we will look at, we will look at that and come up with a resolution that we can maybe all pass.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, and thank you, everybody who came to, to speak to that. Okay, that brings us to the consent calendar. Is there anything on the consent calendar? Anybody wants to pull?
Yes, I would like to pull item 7.3 from consent and have it separate vote.
Okay.
I need to recuse myself. I just have a personal conflict with it, so.
Okay, so that leaves 7.1, 2, 4, 5, and 6. Everybody okay with that? Okay, so we'll start with those, and I'd like to ask for any public comment on those items.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I received one speaker card. It's from Jeff Orth for 7.4.
Okay, then let's, please, let's speak to 7.4.
Hello, Madam Mayor, City Council. Thank you for listening to me today. You had a lot of discussion last council meeting about the parklets. I wanted to give you an update. I took it upon myself to go and interview everybody, all the business owners on Fifth Street. I spoke to a flower shop, three accountants, Celestial Trading, Gavlin Foot Care, a tailor shop, Los Pedicos, Shag Salon, and Station 55. No one feels the parklet needs to go. All of them are fine with the parklet being there. Many of them feel that the parklet is bigger and, quote-unquote, clunkier than it-- Many of them feel that the parklet is bigger and quote-unquote clunkier than it needs to be. Celestial Trading, who has, was most adversely affected by this parklet, suggested that it would be a really good idea if they cleaned up their own trash, because they're not, apparently not very good at that, remove the roof, lower the walls so that you can see the diners from the shoulders up, and angle the corners so that it's not so massive, because it actually takes over more than two parking spaces, roughly equivalent to three parking places. When I went back and circled back around the third time, the second time, three businesses said they were okay with the parklet exactly the way it was. Four of them said it would be much better if it was amended to be like Celestial Trading thought it should be, and that is lowering the profile. So that's all I have. Hope that helps.
Okay, no more comments?
That is it all.
All right, so closing public comment on 7.1, 2, 4, 5, and 6, and unless there's council discussion, looking for a motion on those.
So move second?
Okay, moved by Councilmember Arminderis and seconded by Councilmember Tovar to approve those items.
Mayor, can I ask, I know Councilmember Klein has recused himself, can, can I ask the reason why?
Well, we'll get, when we get to that one. Right now, we're voting on the ones that are not that.
Councilmember Arminderis.
Yes.
Councilmember Bracco.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Aye.
Councilmember Marks.
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar.
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley.
Yes. Okay, and that brings us to 7.3. Councilmember Klein, would you like to say anything?
I just have a personal involvement with property and everything, so I need to pull myself away from it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so is there any public comment on item 7.3?
No speaker cards, Madam Mayor.
Okay, closing public comment on 7.3. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Okay. Moved by Councilmember Tovar, seconded by Councilmember Bracco.
And I will do the roll call vote here.
Okay.
Councilmember Arminderis.
Yes.
Councilmember Bracco.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein has recused himself. Councilmember Hilton.
Aye.
Councilmember Marks.
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar.
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley.
Yes. All right. Councilmember Klein can return. Oh, you are returned, okay, sorry.
Even jokes.
Okay, that brings us to 8.1. Award a contract to ASG Builders for the fiscal year 24 Annual CDBG Sidewalk Curb Ramp Project Number 24 PW 285 in the amount of $97,290. Approve a project contingency of $19,458 and approve a total project expenditure of $116,748 for the construction. Carl Biarkey is going to give us his report.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Carl Biarkey, I'm the interim Public Works Director, and I've got four items for you tonight coming from the engineering CIP program. First one is, as you said, award of a contract to ASG Builders for our annual CDBG Sidewalk Curb Ramp Project. City receives CDBG funds from HUD, and we are, the agreement we have is that we spend those monies on physical improvements. So we're proposing to construct 13 ADA compliant curb ramps, and those ramps are going to be constructed with low, within low and moderate income neighborhoods, which is a requirement of CDBG. The list of locations is in your staff report, but this is a graphical representation of where those ramps are going to be installed. We put this project out to bid, we advertised in the San Jose Mercury News, we put it on the city's webpage. We opened bids on December 20th, we received six bids. The lowest responsive bidder was ASG Builders, and the impact for this financially is, the low bid is $97,290. We're asking for a contingency of 20%, that would be $19,458. The total authorization that we're asking tonight is $116,748, and the funding source is the Community Development Grant Program. So what we'll do for public outreach for construction projects, we'll notify nearby neighborhood residents and schools two weeks in advance, and then again 72 hours in advance. So again, the recommendation is to award a contract to ASG Builders in the amount of $97,290, approve a project contingency of $19,458, for total expenditure of $116,748 for the fiscal year 24 Annual CDBG Sidewalk Curb Ramp Project, and authorize the city administrator to execute the documents, contract documents. And that concludes that presentation.
All right, thank you. Questions from council? Councilmember Tovar?
Thank you, and just sort of reading the packet, can you share with the, the audience, you said we had six different bidders, the bidders, correct?
Yes.
Can you tell us, I mean, how do we end up selecting this company that's, I think, out of Mountain View?
Sure, let me, they are out of Mountain View, that's correct. And this, that's a good, one thing I want to remind the council is, for public construction contracts, we're obligated by law to award to the lowest responsive responsible bidder.
Right.
And I guess I didn't, I thought I had a slide that showed those bids, so I can talk you through those. You want to, is it?
Number 10.
Number 10.
You want to know, oh, I do have a slide, was it on there?
Number 10.
Number 10.
Hmm. It's not coming, it's hidden, it's hidden unfortunately on this one. So we have, we have, we had six bidders, the low of ASG was $97,290, and then they increase, the next lowest was 174,500, that's McKim Corporation, FBD Vanguard at 177,432, JJR Construction at 215,415, Precision Grade 230,310, and then Inter Design Build LLC 238,610.
Thank you for that. So two questions, ASG for, for myself and for the audience, but have we done contract with them before? And then how is it that their contract is roughly, you know, 70-plus thousand dollars less than the next highest bidder?
Okay, I'm not aware if we've done work with these folks before, and we saw that number, we were thrown off by it, it's kind of getting quips out a little bit with the construction contracts, some of them, most of them have been coming in really high. In this case, they came in pretty low.
Right.
So what we did is we took the step of actually calling this contractor and telling them that we intend to hold them to the specifications and to the workmanship and the scope that's described in the, what was in the bid documents, and essentially gave them a chance to say, yeah, maybe we perhaps made it, but they said they stand by it, so they're gonna, they're gonna go with it, so.
Okay, and that answers my question, obviously, I mean, if it's that low of a bid, I'm hoping that they'll stick to it, and I think you already have that laid out, so appreciate that. Thank you.
Yep.
Carl, that might lead into, my question was about the contingency, because normally it's 15%, and I see this one's 20%. Is it maybe just to have a little more cushion?
That's, that's exactly the point, you know, part of the contingency is, you get in these locations, you're not sure what you're going to come across, some, your neighbors' yards and whatnot, but we bumped it up a little bit so that we could spend some more of the money.
Yeah. Okay, if no other questions from council, I'd like to go to public comment. Do we have anybody wanting to speak?
No speaker cards, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Closing public comment, and there's a motion by Councilmember Bracco. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Arminderis.
Ready to move on?
Yep. I think, okay, that passed unanimously. Okay, so that brings us to 8.2. I know, let me just read it, it's a, to award a contract to Hexagon Transportation Consultants for the First, First Street, SR 152, Kern Avenue Traffic Signal Design Project Number 24 RFP PW 494 in the amount of $264,685, and approve a contingency of $39,703. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, Carl Biarkey, interim Public Works Director, I'm just going to move to the next slide there. Oops, let's get this all set up here. There we go. So the background is, at this intersection of First Street and Kern Avenue, it's currently one-way stop controlled on southbound Kern Avenue. So if you're on Kern and you're approaching First, you have to make a right turn only. The existing improvements that are out there now include a pedestrian hybrid beacon and, and pavement markings that prohibit left-hand turns from Kern onto First Street. There's been a recent nearby affordable housing project, which is kind of driving the need for this traffic signal. The dynamics of that intersection have changed since this project went into place, so the traffic signal will help enhance safety and improve traffic operations. This is in the Caltrans right-of-way, which is going to require a permit from them and their approval process. And a map showing the location, the affordable housing project I mentioned is, is above and to the right, which would be north and to the east of, of this intersection. October 20th, we issued RFPs for the design, we sought out pre-qualified consultants. On November 10th, we received five proposals from those firms there, and a committee of engineering staff evaluates the proposals and chooses the most qualified consultant. So Hexagon was chosen, they are from Gilroy.
Thank you.
So the, the design fee is proposed as $264,685. We're asking for a 15% contingency of $39,703, with, asking for a total authorization tonight of $304,388. The funding source is the Traffic Impact Fund. Now, in the, in the fiscal 2324, we had a shortfall of funds for the design effort here, so we're asking for an appropriation from the council of $121,821 to have the funds to, to support this. No public outreach during the design unless something in the design materially impacts those businesses there, then we'll, we'll make sure that we're reaching out to those businesses and talking to them about that. But certainly we'll have some public outreach during the construction phase. And again, the recommendations are, the first one is to adopt a resolution to appropriate the additional $121,821 from the Traffic Impact Fund, and award a contract to Hexagon Transportation Consultants in the amount of $264,685, approve a project contingency of $39,703, and approve a total project expenditure of $304,388 for design services for this intersection project. If council approves with this, if council approves this action tonight, we will direct Hexagon to begin design work, and we expect that to be done early 2025, and then bidding and construction will start soon after. And that's all I have for that.
Okay, thank you. This is going to make a lot of residents in that area very happy, who were quite upset to see the change of a, one, just a right-hand turn only there, yeah, so no. Happy this is going forward, speaking for myself. Any council member questions before I go to public comment? Okay, do we have anybody from the public wanting to speak?
No speaker cards, Madam Mayor.
All right, then closing public comment. Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Klein, and, okay, seconded by Councilmember Arminderis. I heard her, I saw you, so, okay. All right, and this is a roll call vote. This is, oh, the motion is for A and B, can we do that together?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
Councilmember Arminderis.
Yes.
Councilmember Bracco.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Aye.
Councilmember Marks.
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar.
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley.
Yes, it passes unanimously, and that brings us to 8.3. Award a contract to Hydroscience Engineers Incorporated for the design of water utility improvements, project number 24 RFP PW 497 in the amount of $842,790, and approve a project contingency of $126,419. Carl, you're going to do this one, too.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council, Carl Biarkey. Let's get this fired up here. Okay, this project is addressing our water utility system, because we have a lot of pipes in the ground, and obviously they age out and they need replacement. So we have six locations that we've identified for either repair or replacement, and those locations are at Casey and Swanston, Broadway and Sargent, Church and Gurrys, Church Street from Welborn to First, to First Street, and Murray at Burke, so that'll be a reroute of a water line along, and from, on Monterey from Leesley to Ronan will replace that water line. So these products, these have been identified because they're at the end of their useful life, so what we're going to do with this project is build the, that will design this for the necessary improvements needed to avoid pipe failures, reduce leaks, reduce the public works staff time repairing those leaks, increase capacity or improve fire flow pressures. And the locations are identified in your staff report, and they're, here they are depicted December 15th, we issued RFPs, again, this is a design contract, we issued RFPs for pre-qualified consultants. January 12th, we received three proposals from those three firms there. The city's internal engineering team evaluated the proposals, and we selected the most qualified, that's Hydroscience Engineers there out of San Jose. And let's talk about the funding part of it. The design fee is $842,790. We're asking for a 15% contingency of $126,419, which is a total authorization tonight of The funding source is the Water Fund. So two of, two of the locations that are on the list were in this year's fiscal year 24 projects to be handled. We've identified four others that are in next year's list that we feel should be accelerated, so we're going to pull those into this year's project, and to do that, we're going to do, we're asking for a budget amendment to increase this year's budget by $605,038, and then de, what we'll be doing also is decreasing next year's budget by the same amount. During the, the design part, we won't be doing any design, any outreach unless, unless something comes up that we really need to talk to property owners about, and in construction we certainly will be. And again, the recommendation is to adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Gilroy to increase the fiscal year 24 and decrease fiscal year 25 budget by $605,308 in the Water Fund, and award, second item is award a contract to Hydroscience Engineers in the amount of $842,790, approve a project contingency of $126,419, and approve a project expenditure of $969,209 for the design of the Water Utility Improvements Project identified here, and ask the city administrator to execute the documents. Next steps, if this is approved tonight, we'll direct Hydroscience to start beginning the design work. We also expect this one to be completed, the design work, in 2025, and then we'll begin bidding and construction soon after that.
Okay, thank you, Carl. Council, questions? I have some, I'm looking to council first. Carl, these projects, I mean, these, these streets, these six streets, will this water line improvement, I'm going to call it, be similar to what we all experienced when it was done on First Street? When those water, or, or is it a lesser?
These will be, open trench, we'll be pulling out, removing the existing line and replacing it with a new one.
With a larger diameter?
Yes, it'll be larger diameter, sometimes necessarily, not necessarily larger, but...
Stronger.
Yeah, stronger. They're, they're chosen because they're, they're, you know, brittle nature, they're just old, and we've had maintenance problems with them, so.
So when it was done on First Street, we did that prior to the repaving of First Street. Are these streets set for repaving in our street improvements, or how, how will each of these leave those streets?
Well, what we've, what we're attempting to do here is to, when we, when they backfill these trenches and they do the pavement, so it's, so we're, we're going to attempt to expand the, the range of the pavement rehabilitation that goes on top, so it's not just going to be a trench, we're going to go over that. So that's our goal, because, because of what you just suggested. I wouldn't say all these are in our future pavement, near-term pavement projects, but we're going to try to do the best we can with, by expanding what we would maybe normally do for a pavement restoration.
Yeah, to not leave the street in worse condition than you found it.
That's right.
The point.
That's right.
Okay, making sure of that. And then lastly, to just reiterate that the funding for all this is coming from the Water Fund. This isn't, yeah, it's already, it's already utilities fund, right, that's where the money's coming from.
We have a lot of water projects, as you know.
Yes, that's why we have our...
Projects to get to, so this is like the first step.
Our new department, right, right. Okay, then I'll go to public comment. Do we have any speakers?
No speaker cards, Madam Mayor.
Okay, closing public comment, and back to looking for a motion, if anybody would like to make a motion. Moved by Councilmember Bracco, seconded by Councilmember Tovar, and this will be a, mine says, roll call, this is for A and B, again.
Yes.
Roll call vote.
Yes, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Arminderis.
Yes.
Councilmember Bracco.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Aye.
Councilmember Marks.
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar.
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley.
Yes, and that passed unanimously. Okay, 8.4, gosh, Carl, that's the last one for you. All right, award a contract to, is it Villa Lobos and Associates for the fiscal year 24 Annual Citywide citywide curb ramp project number 24 PW286 in the amount of $104,130 with a project contingency of $10,413, 10%.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, Carl Biarki interim Public Works Director. So a little background on this, the project was funded with Transportation Development Act, it's an Article III grant, and vehicle registration fee funds. So what we plan to do with this project, this is not in the CDBG area, these are other parts of town, to construct 16 ADA compliant curb ramps. And the project will focus on areas where there is no curb ramp right now, so we're trying to get ramps installed where they're currently not there. And they were called out in your staff report, but this graphically shows where these are We advertised in the San Jose Mercury News and the city website for, this is a construction bid. Bids were opened on January 9th. We received six bids, and the lowest responsible bidder is Villa Lobos and Associates, and they are from Gilroy.
There you go.
Disruptive, Fred. Please continue.
Doing my part. Okay, so fiscal impact, we're looking for a total bid of $104,130, asking for a 20% contingency of $20,826 for a total authorization tonight of $124,956. The source is the Transportation Mobility Grant Fund, that's the fund that we put our TDA grant in, and then the Vehicle Registration Fee Fund. And we will notify residents and schools, affected residents and schools, two weeks prior, and then again 72 hours prior. So our recommendation is to award a contract to Villa Lobos and Associates in the amount of $104,130, approve a project contingency of $20,826, and approve a total project expenditure of $124,956 for the annual citywide curb ramp project, and to authorize the city administrator to execute the contract and associated documents.
Okay, thank you. Looking to council before I go, questions? Okay, I just have one, Carl, I don't even know if you know the answer to it, but do you know who specifically within the school district we notify when these things happen? Because it's just all too often that I'm told, we didn't know, we weren't told, you know, just who is it so that I, when I have my monthly meetings, Jimmy and I both with our school board and superintendent?
We, there's a gentleman, I don't recall his name, I don't make the contact myself, he sits in our tack meetings bizarre, I think that's from the school district.
Alvaro Mesa?
Is it Alvaro?
Alpro?
Paul, his name is Paul.
Paul Winslow.
I'm just curious as to who it is we're supposed, we are notifying?
Yeah, well, that's a good question.
So that I can make sure that they understand this is who gets these notifications.
I'll confirm that and send a note up to the city administrator.
Okay. Is that all right, Jimmy, let us know? Thank you. That is my only question. Okay, and now public comment.
No speaker cards, Madam Mayor.
All right, closing public comment, and looking...
Approval?
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Tovar, and seconded by Councilmember Armandares to approve Agenda Item 8.4. This one is a digital vote. All right, that passed unanimously. All right, thanks, everyone, and thank you, Carl. Okay, under Item 10, unfinished business, we have none. Item 11, introduction of new business, approval to enter into an exclusive negotiating agreement, that's a business term, by the way, this isn't actually negotiating necessarily yet, with Bay Equatarium for potential users of the Hecker Pass Recreation Gateway Area, and Jimmy will give us the staff report. Oh, Victoria will give us the staff report, sorry. That's okay.
Good evening, Mayor, council members and members of the public. I'm Victoria Valencia, the city's economic development manager, and I'm here, let me update this for you. I'm here today to present the staff report seeking council approval to enter into an exclusive negotiating agreement with Bay Equatarium for potential uses of the Recreation Gateway Area located off of Hecker Pass Highway. Staff's recommendation is for council to approve an exclusive negotiating rights agreement between the City of Gilroy and Bay.org, also known as Bay Equatarium, and authorize the city administrator to execute all related documents and to create an ad hoc committee consisting of three Gilroy City Council members and the city administrator to serve as members of the city's negotiating party. Staff's recommendation here does not indicate what direction the city may want to proceed with the property. In summary, the City of Gilroy is evaluating how to utilize the 536-acre property at 3050 Hecker Pass Highway, including Gilroy Gardens. This is also referred to as the Recreation Gateway Area or the RGA. To date, the city has received interest from two companies, Bay.org, which we'll refer to later in this presentation as Bay Equatarium, with an offer to purchase the property and select contracts with an offer to lease the property long term. Staff recommends moving forward with an exclusive negotiating rights agreement with Bay.org. While moving forward with discussions of the prospective sale of the RGA is the staff's primary recommendation, the city should remain open to exploring the lease alternative should circumstances or preferences evolve after the E&amp;R agreement period ends. This here is a map showing the subject property. This is located on the edge of the city at the gateway of Hecker Pass Highway, which leads directly to Highway 1 and the Monterey Bay. Some background information, the City of Gilroy purchased the RGA in 2008 for $13 million, including Gilroy Gardens. The city still owes approximately $4 million on that property. The city is considering a sale or long-term lease of the land to drive post-COVID economic recovery with direct, indirect revenue, job growth, and tourism destination brand diversification. Here's some more information about the two interested parties. We have Bay Equatarium, they're comprised of six institutions focused on marine education, habitat restoration, and watershed preservation. They currently operate Aquarium of the Bay, which is located in San Francisco, and Bay Models Visitor Center, which is located in Sausalito. Select contracts specializes in designing, building, and operating global leisure and entertainment projects. Their projects include adventure parks, bike parks, family entertainment centers, surf parks, and water parks in 71 countries. Both entities have shown interest in continuing to operate Gilroy Gardens. The city has an opportunity to enter into this ENA for the possible sale of the 536 acres, you know where it's located by now, including Gilroy Gardens with the nonprofit organization Bay Equatarium. The proposed agreement would allow both parties to conduct due diligence and proceed in talks without losing a potential deal immediately. After conducting due diligence, the city and Bay Equatarium may or may not pursue constructing a viable framework of deal points. The proposed framework would then be used to draft a mutually beneficial agreement. At this time, the council would seek public input, which would include input from the current Gilroy Gardens Board of Directors. The city council would then have an opportunity to review any potential future agreement due to these exclusive talks before execution. Here's a little about what the exclusive negotiating rights agreement is. It's an arrangement between two parties wherein neither will explore entering into a similar deal with other parties for a specific period. The exclusivity agreement would allow both parties to conduct due diligence and proceed in confidential talks without losing a potential deal. During this time, staff would closely examine the proposal's details and determine if it may be advantageous for the community and how best to proceed. After conducting due diligence, the city and vendor may or may not pursue constructing a viable framework of deal points. The proposed framework would then be used to draft a mutually beneficial agreement. The city council would then have the opportunity to review any potential future agreement due to these exclusive talks before the execution. We're also recommending council appoint an ad hoc committee. This would be similar to the process that we went through with the Sharks and the Sharks Ice Project. This would consist of three council members, and they would work with the city administrator to confidentially discuss long-term options for the property. They would have access to the city's and Bay Equatarium's confidential financial information, and they would make recommendations to the entire council concerning a possible path moving forward. Most likely, there would be three to four meetings, and meetings would, could be virtual, and the meeting time could be flexible with evenings being a possibility. Next steps, the staff would propose to enter into a 120-day exclusivity agreement with Bay Equatarium to continue business discussions for the potential sale and development of the Gilroy Gardens Hillside property as a recreation and tourism destination. In addition to entering into the agreement, staff proposes to create that ad hoc committee of three council members and the city administrator who would serve as the city's negotiating party. And something to point out here, this is pre-negotiations, there would be future conversations. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Victoria. Okay, I'm going to say something first, just having been very involved in with the Sharks, with the ad hoc committee thing, because I, thank you for that report, I think it was great.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I do, I wish the word negotiating were the, that's the business term, it's called an ENA, exclusive negotiated agreement, but there's no negotiating that actually happens until it gets to an open session of the council. The whole point is to be able to have the time that is necessary, and what staff is proposing is 120 days, which is way faster than we did with the Sharks, to see if we have the bones of something that we would like to bring to the public about this, and if not, it's no longer than four months of trying to go down this road. So that's the reason for this. I don't think you can possibly know what it is we're entertaining until you enter into that kind of exclusivity that allows each party to share information that is not meant to be made public until you know, just like when you're trying to sell your home, until escrow closes, anything you're talking about is private because that may not be a deal, and you may be moving forward with something totally different. Any other councils wanting to comment or ask questions before I go to the public? Yes, sir?
Thank you, thank you for the great presentation, and thank you for outlining and having a good presentation that we can share with the public, because as you know, this is, we've been talking about this 536 since like 2019, since Jane Howard pitched it. So it's hard to keep everybody engaged, but this is great that we have two really good companies that are still highly interested in this, and it was really hard to walk out of that closed session a couple of weeks ago without being able to give this. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. Okay, we'll go to public comment. There are two people that I see wanting to speak.
Yes, Madam Mayor. The first speaker is Ron Kirkish, followed by Jane Howard.
Good evening again, Mayor and council and community. I was contacted by some folks that are intimately involved with the park, and they're concerned about what's going on. And so I'm going to read, they asked me to read this to you, council. Dear council members, in regards to tonight's Agenda Item ENA between City of Gilroy and the Bay Aquarium, I think it is important to remind the public and the county, or the council, of a few important facts. Gilroy Gardens is part of the park system. Gilroy Gardens plays an important role in our local tourism economy. It is also the largest employer of youth in the area, providing over 400 summer jobs to local students. Selling the park means we would be giving up local control to an outside group who may not have the same or synergistic intention for the park. The last one we went on the 536 is housing. Before entering this agreement, I urge each of the council members to vet the potential buyers and their intent. Who is the Aquarium of the Bay? Who is the leadership team? What is their intent? Does it align with our objectives? As it stands, Gilroy Gardens is a gem, it is well-managed, a great place to visit, and an excellent employer for our youth. He goes on to say, "Please use caution when entering this agreement. Sincerely, a concerned citizen." Thank you.
All right, Jane Howard, I think, is the next speaker.
Good evening. And Mayor, thanks for some clarification in your comments, because I know my remarks were a little more about negotiations, because that's what is stated here in the agenda. But anyway, as you know, with my background in tourism and Gilroy Gardens' board experience, and now that current, you know, I'm president of the Chamber of Commerce, it's a pretty exciting time. I do want to bring up a couple of points that, having been a co-leader with Gilroy Economic Development Partnership that brought one, this particular initiative along with the Sharks and Gourmet Alley to the council, that this is something that we have certainly advocated for in terms of the big picture of Gilroy as a recreation destination. I'm very excited about this, and I also want to say that on behalf of the Gilroy Gardens Board of Directors, we want to offer ourselves as a resource to the negotiating of the team that's going to be talking to Bay Equatarium, use this as an industry resource or an offer that we could say an advisor, because we've worked with this company, we know them, we can have a good understanding of how their potential proposal could be a really good enhancement for the gardens, and at the same time, you want to make sure that the gardens can continue to be sustainable. So we offer that to you. In addition, the gardens board is encouraging the council, if the ENA is approved, to appoint Councilmember Marks as one of the team that is going to be on this, lack of, I don't want to use negotiating, but the group that's going to be talking about this initiative. And we say that because Councilmember Marks has been on the Gilroy Gardens Board for a number of years as your city council representative, and she can provide the negotiating team with the real-time information regarding the gardens' operations and our plans. Right now, there's a $2 million capital improvement budget, improvement project going on right now. We could also talk about what's coming up for the next year that we already have in place. She's also very familiar with the new Gilroy Gardens Initiative, the foundation which I'm currently leading, and we're also working very closely with the team at Bay Equatarium because they have an amazing foundation in place that could really be an enhancement or partnership with the current foundation at the gardens. So in summary, I've read the staff report, and I appreciate the background and the analysis. And due to the fact that I and others on the Gilroy Gardens team personally know this company, we again want to say, use this as a resource, we can be helpful here. In addition, the tourism industry and what Gilroy can become as a recreation destination, I think that synergy that could be created with a collaborative effort by the partners of the Gilroy Economic Development Partnership, which includes Gilroy Gardens?
The three minutes has passed. I'm sorry.
Okay, thanks, everybody. Sorry.
I thought I had it down to three. It was wonderful. Everything you said is wonderful, and hopefully all that information will get addressed. Okay, I'm not speaking directly to you, we're not supposed to do that, but are there any other public comments?
No speaker cards, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so closing public comment, and, yes?
I'd like to make a recommendation for approval for the negotiating right agreement and also the creation of an ad hoc committee.
Okay. Well, before we vote, I'd like to, okay, I'd like to second what he said, so we have a motion and a second to create the ad hoc committee, what maybe needs, should the identity of the ad hoc committee be identified in that motion, or is that separate?
I actually recommend to do it in two stages.
Okay.
Take number one first to approve the agreement, and then number two, appoint a committee with identified members.
Perfect.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve an exclusive negotiating agreement as staff recommends, which is 120 days?
Correct.
Okay, and is there council discussion on that?
Well, I had something I just wanted to say, but it wasn't on that particular topic.
Would you like us to be, do you want us to, do you want to say it now?
I do want to say it now.
Do you want us to vote on this?
I'm feeling very uncomfortable right now. I'm on the board of Gilroy Gardens, and I just want to go on public record saying, I am not the person that spoke with Mr. Kirkish. When he talks about concerned citizen, it's not me. Okay, that's all I wanted to say.
Okay. Okay.
Did he say, oh?
Okay. So we have, we have a motion and a second then to approve Item 1, which is the ENA for 120 days. And so let's vote on that. All right, and that passed unanimously. So now part two is to create the ad hoc committee. Okay, and I would like to suggest that the members of that ad hoc committee be myself, Councilmember Bracco, and Councilmember Klein. So that's just my suggestion to having the ad hoc committee.
I'd like to throw my name in the hat. I'd like to throw my name in the hat. I haven't been on an ad hoc committee, I'm currently not on one, and I've been following any, everything that's been going on with the 536 since 2019 as a past commissioner for the city and I would love the opportunity to, to work on this as well.
Okay. Well, let's do, yeah, I guess I'll, Councilmember Tovar, do you want to go ahead and make your comment first?
No, no, I just think if we have more than three, then I think.
You can't have more than three.
No, no. I'm saying if we have more than three that want to be on this committee, each of them can speak on why they think they should be on this committee.
Okay, got it. All right, who wanted to speak over here?
I did.
Councilmember Armand Deris.
I just wanted to ask Councilmember Marks if she'd like to, because I'd like to nominate her to be on it.
Okay, yes, I would accept.
Okay, so the, I would like to point out and it will, I mean, Andy can comment on this too, but Councilmember Marks would be the only person then on the committee privy to both sides because she's on the Gardens Board, which I believe is a, is a clear conflict of interest.
I think it is.
Because we're, so, so for that reason.
How are they, how are they two sides? I don't understand.
She sits on the board as director.
No, I understand that, but to me, that gives her, that gives her an advantage to be on our, on the ENA because, so I don't see it as two different sides.
I understand that you don't. Council, Andy, would you like to explain?
I think I could say only that when you're on a board, either a council member or a board of an organization or business like Gilroy Gardens, you have a duty of loyalty and kind of fiduciary duty to that organization. So you have to act in the best interests of that organization because you're a board member, that's what boards are supposed to do. That can create a conflict when the two entities have conflicting goals or have, or get in negotiation or, or involved in a project where they might have different aspirations and different desires. So it's generally viewed as a, as a kind of conflict of interest.
Yeah, which we don't know that there will be conflicts, but until we get into it and bring something back.
That makes sense.
I don't see Gilroy Gardens as independent of the City of Gilroy.
Okay.
And so, and she's our representative from the council to that entity, right, so.
Right, okay. Okay, so we have Councilmember Hilton who's also interested and Councilmember Marks who's interested. So, okay. I think what, maybe what I'll do here is see if there's a second to my motion, that it be myself, Councilmember Bracco, and Councilmember Klein, then with a second, we can let the two others that are interested go ahead and speak as Councilmember Tovar suggested and then vote.
I'm sorry, Mayor, can you repeat what you just said? What was your?
I'm making a motion that we create an ad hoc committee. Consisting of myself, Councilmember Bracco, and Councilmember Klein. And, okay, so that's got a second now. So we have two other council members interested. So we would, we've heard why Councilmember Marks has a conflict of interest.
Proceed.
If someone doesn't want to.
Proceed.
Well, I believe, I'm sorry, it, to me, it is a conflict of interest going into a negotiation where only that council member has information that the rest would not necessarily have.
As a member of a council who appointed her to that committee.
Yes.
Yeah. So it's perception.
Okay, again, I disagree. So we can, yeah, you can do that, we can disagree. Councilmember Marks, would you like to make a statement? Then we'll let Councilmember Hilton make one if he wants to make another.
I already made a statement.
He already made a statement.
The only statement I would make is that, I guess I do sit on the board and I do know Gilroy Gardens', you know, interest, I also know the city's interest, and I feel I would be really good at being able to ask certain questions, you know, during the ENA, knowing that it's confidential on both sides, but I think I would add a good balance. That's, that's my perspective.
Right. And I've nothing, you were great on the Sharks ad hoc committee. You know, this, these are commitments that there are meetings, you have to be present for the meetings, they are very regular and we try to get through this quickly. Anytime someone can't make it, that creates something that is a time thing. So I just want to point out.
Point of order, please. Are we going to vote on Zach and Carol independently?
We're gonna first.
Or is there gonna be a second, like?
We're gonna first see if there is majority.
Let's outline the process.
We're gonna first see if there's majority support for the motion that's on the floor.
Mayor, just so, you just, your last comments here, as stated on the PowerPoint, there would be virtual meetings, I think. Victoria, what were the number of total meetings that you're expecting to have?
So we're anticipating three to four meetings.
Three to four, evening, flexible, virtual meetings. So I don't think, and again, as one of the first individuals that was on the Sharks Committee, I gave up my seat to the mayor because obviously there's so many meetings going on and my work, conflict with my work, but this is different. This is saying it, three to four meetings, evening and possible virtual meetings. So I think that's not the same as the Shark one, just my.
Are you saying you're interested too?
No, 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 no. I'm just saying, I made a comment there. But I do, Andy, I do have a comment with you. I know you, you gave your definition or your take on it, but for me, what I need to know, what I'm asking you is, is it a conflict of interest, in your opinion, as our attorney?
I think most attorneys would regard it as a conflict of interest.
But you're our attorney, so what do you think?
Right, yeah, I'm not asking about anyone else, just.
Most attorneys. Most attorneys representing Gilroy, what would they say?
Most attorneys representing Gilroy would regard it as a conflict of interest.
Okay. Okay, so I think with that, I'm gonna call for the question, yeah, sorry. Councilmember Bracco?
Did you want me to say why I should be on?
Oh, sure. Yeah.
Yeah, I have a lot of historical knowledge on this issue. I also was on the team for the Sharks and I was working with Bob Kramer when we brought this to the city about buying the park. So I've been involved with the park, I've sat on the board before, I've been involved ever since I've been on council.
All right, thank you. And for me, it's because of my background, CPA, business knowledge, I'm gonna look at this thing from the actual number standpoint. How does it pan out? What happens if it's a sale? What happens if it's a lease? What happens if, or neither? But what is this going to do financially to, to, to further the interests of recreation and tourism for Gilroy Gardens? Councilmember Klein, do you want to say anything?
Yeah, I think along that vein and also just tracking this project over time as far as the whole aspects of this in the last three to four years, I just feel as a businessman and understanding how things go and whatnot, that I can bring that to this conversation.
Okay, then with that, everyone has spoken who is interested in being on, so I would like to ask us to, to vote then. Ty, is this digital or is this roll call?
Yes, this can be digital, but give me one second so I can set up the motion.
Okay.
So the motion was?
The motion was to approve an ad hoc committee that has myself, Councilmember Bracco, and Councilmember Klein as the members.
Oh, it's digital?
It's digital, yeah, it's on your screen. That passed, right, four. Okay, thank you, everybody. That brings us to Item 12, which is city administrators' reports.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have two quick reports. One, I want to thank our Public Works crews for their work in the last couple of weeks. You always been getting battered, but hanging in there, bending but not breaking, and all those tree limbs that you see in the morning are gone very quickly and the drains are continuing to be cleaned up. So we're doing pretty good, but certainly have a few bruises. Second, I want to make an announcement on behalf of the Community Development Department. We have an Affordable Housing Community Workshop, Affordable Housing 101, and it's between the City of Gilroy and SV at Home. It's a free workshop this Wednesday, February 7th, from 6:00 to 7:00, right here in the chambers, and the workshop is intended for the general public, anyone in the community who wants to learn more about affordable housing. The workshop will be held in English and Spanish with the Wordly app, and please visit us at cityofgilroy.org/housing if you want more information. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. City attorneys' reports.
I have no report, but I'm ready to read the closed session items if you are.
Okay, yep.
All right, Item 14, closed session, there are two of them. The first one is conference with labor negotiator collective bargaining unit pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6 and Gilroy City Code 17A11.4. Collective bargaining units local 2805 IAFF fire unit representing Gilroy firefighters, city negotiators Jimmy Forbes and Leanne McPhillips. Anticipated issues under negotiation, wages, hours, benefits, working conditions. Memorandum of Understanding, City of Gilroy and Gilroy firefighters, Local 2805. That's Item 14.1. Item 14.2 is the second closed session, conference with real property negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8, Gilroy City Code 17A8A2. Properties 10th Street Bridge, the APNs are given on, in the agenda. Thomas Luchessa Bridge, similar, new fire station, also the APNs are given. Negotiators Jimmy Forbes, city administrator, other party to negotiations, Glen Loma Corporation, John M. Felice Jr. Negotiating provisions are price and terms of payment regarding purchase and sale. So the thing to do now is take public comment, then go into closed session, and in closed session, we will vote on whether to remain in closed session, and that vote is publicly reported.
All right, thank you. For those in council chambers who are speaking, can you please exit? Thank you. Do we have any public comment on closed session items?
No speaker cards, Madam Mayor.
Okay, closing public comment on that. So let's shut everything down and take a five-minute recess and then we'll resume.